Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Missoula City Council Meeting of September 17th, 2018 to order. If you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) One nation, safe to live, of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please let... And please let the record note that the exceptions of Mr. Hess, Ms. Becerra, Ms. West, Ms. Kears, and Ms. Jones, all council members are present. We have minutes from the meeting of September 10th. Without objection, they'll be approved. Seeing none, we'll move on to the schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Rayvine?
Thanks. We're holding committee meetings this coming Wednesday, the 19th of September. Public Works will start out the day from 8:55 in the morning to 9:15. The Committee of the Whole will follow from 9:20 to 9:50. Land Use and Planning has two sessions this coming Wednesday. First one will start at 9:55 and go till 11:25, little five-minute break, and then the next meeting will start at 11:30 and go till 12:30 in the afternoon. For the record, Heidi West is in the room. And Administration and Finance Committee will meet in the afternoon from 1 o'clock to 1:45. As always, all those meetings are being held right here in the City Council chambers, 140 West Pine.
Thank you, Ms. Rayvine. Any changes to the committee's schedule this evening? Seeing none of those, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to speak on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Mr. Cook?
Thank you. This is on?
It is.
My name is Tom Cook, and I live in the Lower Rattlesnake. And I wanted to start by thanking Mr. Von Losberg and Mr. DeBary for engaging in a brief email exchange about some items of interest to me, but I wanted to share with the rest of you briefly what I thought I was talking about, anyway. The county's website has a very teeny hot link called Property Information, and if you go there, you can learn an awful lot about your property. You can learn an awful lot about anybody's property. But the point is, there is a lot of information on the county's part and on the school district's part about how tax money is spent, but there's surprisingly little, almost none, on the city's part. It may be an oversight on my part, but it may be missing from the, you know, the information at the county's website. But having said that, there may be a lot of online information on how the city spends money, and if that is the case, I would love to see a sustained effort to let the rest of us know where that information is. And in part, I say that to save you more meetings that last until midnight or till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. Thirdly, and I don't think I mentioned this in our email exchange, I am frustrated when community cheerleaders, activists, television stations, radio stations tell us what the impact of a mill levy will be on a house of an average, with an average value or a median value. Those things are not the same, and the difference is important. And so if perhaps the city's communications director can make a sustained effort to direct everyone, and I would love to see reference to a median value, because one or two houses in Grant Creek or Lincolnwood or Lincoln Hills can really change an average value. But if we could rely on a median value, and I say that for real estate agents also, it may be more accurate information. But those are the only things that I have to say. More information, especially the city's website, if that's where we have to go, it would be wonderful if we all knew about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Lucino?
Good evening. My name's Bob Lucino, 40-year resident of Missoula, and had the privilege of sitting where you're sitting in the late '80s, early '90s, representing Ward III. I want to first start out by thanking Councilmember Jesse Ramus. I was unable to come down here, and I realize it's all a done deal, and don't perceive my comments now as testimony. I know the public hearing's gone, the budget's been set, but if I can just offer a few thoughts as you head into the next year, things I've been thinking about for a while, I would just like to offer those. And thank you again for taking a brave stand. That's not easy. On the spending side of things, I've had a conversation with Mayor Engen once, sort of on the fly. We ran into each other at Bernice's, and I was wondering, I'd asked him a question about the health insurance that you, which is a big piece of your budget, I know. And he kind of updated me. I'm in the dark ages. I was, you know, I was where you are many years ago. And I was very surprised to learn that if I heard you right, Mayor Engen, there's 14 different city departments that are now unionized. Is that correct? I think so.
Thirteen or fourteen, yeah.
And back in the early '90s, that wasn't the case. And I understand that when departments are unionized, you have a different set of constraints. But I would just like to suggest and remind you all that in the private sector, whether it's an employee-based health insurance plan or an individual market plan that my family's on, we are in a whole different universe than what you're providing to city employees. And wow, it's a beautiful thing, what you're providing to city employees. And once something's offered, it's very difficult to take it away. I understand that. But I'd like to see if you could have some serious conversations, because we're all in the real world, this coming year in the appropriate committees of whether the city can continue to sustain the major contribution that you are incurring with employee premiums, where you're incurring such a high percentage of it. Secondly, and this may be the law, I just don't know, and the private sector, as you know, a typical employee receives seven, maybe eight vacation days, and unless I have the wrong information, I think city employees have 15 to 16 vacation days. Maybe it's required to have federal holidays. I don't know. I'm a little bit ignorant there, but that may be something that you can talk about. You know, when you, I live in the Rattlesnake, and every morning, every time I come down, and I think there's a sign also coming off Orange Street, but there's many signs when people come off the interstate and come down the Rattlesnake, and one of the signs is, "Missoula is a playful city." I don't know what playful city USA means, but I know we like to play here. And I think the city's done its part with the Parks and Trails bond issue, it was $34 million, with the Pine View Park bond issue, which was other millions, with all the open space that we've been purchasing over the last 25 years. And I would like to suggest that you have some serious conversations in committee this year about a moratorium on purchasing more open space. I just think we all need a rest, and especially the taxpayers need a rest. So my taxes, when I moved to our current house 12 years ago, were $2,300 a year. They're now $5,000. I know you heard a lot of this sort of thing in the public hearing, and I'm just another person, but now I'm on a fixed income. And a lot of us that are on fixed incomes, who have lived here a long time, have done that heavy lifting. We've been paying the taxes a long time, and now it's sort of onerous to think that we're going to continue to see such heavy, heavy tax increases in the future. On bond issues, please do what you can and continue to remember us, who are paying for them, when special interests come to you and say, "We'd like to put a bond issue forth." But my one question that I have, and if it's inappropriate, it probably is for you to give me a response now, but I would like a response perhaps from my councilmembers from Ward 1, Heidi or Brian. Does the city and the county and the school district have any kind of cooperative meetings throughout the year, quarterly, semiannually, to all be on the same page about what you all want to bring forth to the voters in terms of bond issues? I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
And we're at five minutes, bud.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know I went longer. So that's about it, other than the urban deer. Now, there's something you can really do something about, because the mountain lines are getting closer. Thank you. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Lucino. Any other general public comment this evening?
Howdy there. My name is Bryce Rowe, and I live in the University District. As a proponent of smooth streets and transportation ease, I would just like to recommend smaller aggregate size in the next chip seal batches. I realize economically wise, chip seal far, it out exceeds other options, and, you know, for the budget, it's nice. But smaller aggregate for next go-around. Otherwise, thank you for everything you're doing, and yeah, I'm a happy citizen.
Thank you, sir. Any other general public comment this evening?
Mike Painter, I live in Rose Park. Bryce used to be on the Rose Park Neighborhood Council Leadership Team, by the way. Way to go, Bryce. I know it's probably against both city ordinance and state law for Painter to speak twice in the same city council meeting, but I wanted to just bring up the fact that one of MFD's retirees, Buzz McDonald, who was the battalion chief on my shift when I was hired, passed away September 5th, and he's a veteran, and he also helped carve, carve some of the horses at the Missoula Carousel. His funeral's going to be in the Western Montana Veterans Deal on the 28th, and I just want to let you know that. I really appreciate the work Buzz did on behalf of your fire department and also toward your carousel. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously by city council standing committees, and we save a little time on Monday evening by considering these items all at once. Ms. Rayvine will read the list of consent agenda items, and we'll take comment before we vote. Ms. Rayvine?
Thanks. It's a long one. There's 14 items on tonight's consent agenda, so let's get started. First one is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable in the amount of $400, excuse me, $794,664.27 for checks that are dated tomorrow, September 28th, 2018. Number two is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Morrison &amp; Merrily Incorporated for engineering services for the Reserve Street wastewater pumping station project at a cost not to exceed $120,300. Number three is to approve the Rose Park Neighborhood Council bylaws. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with John McDonald Consulting LLC for lobbyist services during the 2019 legislative session in the amount of $32,000. Number five is to approve a 20-foot-wide underground utility easement to Northwestern Energy across a portion of the Moose Can Gully Park to replace aging infrastructure to Elmhurst Court in the Hillview Heights Number 2 subdivision. Number two, I can't say six tonight. Six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Werwath Associates to provide housing policy planning services in the amount not to, in an amount not to exceed $33,912. Number seven is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Corey Simonsen to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board for a term that begins October 1st, 2018, and expires on September 30th of 2021. The next two are waivers for the noise ordinance. Number eight is to approve a waiver from Missoula Municipal Code Chapter 9.30 entitled Noise Control for Verizon Wireless in order for their contractor to install underground fiber optics along Higgins Avenue, Patty Canyon Drive, and Whittaker Drive. The second one is to approve a waiver from Missoula Municipal Code, same chapter, 9.30, entitled Noise Control for Northwestern Energy for repair and replacement of a gas main valve in the intersection of South Avenue and Higgins Avenue. Number 10 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Montana Department of Transportation for milling and repaving only the drivelanes on Russell Street from Brook Street to Ernest Avenue. Number 11 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Lloyd H. Dwight Family Partnership, in which the city agrees to pay the construction and engineering costs for upsizing 909 lineal feet of water main from 8 inches to 12 inches in diameter and installing additional piping to accommodate a future pressure-reducing valve, or PRV station, for a total cost not to exceed $27,997.63. Number 12 is to award the bid for construction services on the Farview's pressure-reducing valve project, it's also a water project, to Western Excavating in an amount not to exceed $331,239, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Number 13 is to award the bid for epoxy pavement marking improvements for Project SID 549, the Hillview, that's the Hillview Way project, to Highmark Traffic Services Incorporated in the amount of $33,110, and authorize the return of bid bonds. And finally, number 14 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Western Excavating for concrete blocks to use, to be used in the construction of a compost transitional facility at a cost not to exceed $58,215.
Thank you, Ms. Rayvine. Questions or comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment on the consent agenda? Sir? Need to step to the microphone? Tell us who you are for the record, please, sir?
Hi, Gary Wanberg, and I live in the Pleasant View subdivision.
Yes, sir.
And just curious, on number 11 there, when she was reading that, she said 8 inches to 12 inches, and it's here, it says 10. Is it 10 or 12?
I believe that Ms. Rayvine misspoke, and it's a 10-inch.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, let's see here, hang on. Anderson.
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Armstrong.
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. DeBary.
Yes.
Harp.
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess is absent. Merritt.
Yes.
Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg.
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Feel like I'm missing somebody. Did everybody vote? Eight ayes and four absent?
And the consent agenda is approved. We did the math. It's perfect. Officer, we're good. Thanks. We'll move on to comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. We have two neighborhood council reports this evening, and in no particular order, we'll start with Rose Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight, report on your Rose Park Neighborhood Council's recent general meeting. It was a lovely Sunday evening at Rose Park on September 9th. We had some 50 or 60 residents show up and have ice cream with us. I also appreciate Nick Shon, who's going to reporting on River Road here in just a minute, showing up, because it takes a lot of pressure off me trying to be the person with the best hairstyle here. I didn't have to get out my scrunchies and my hairstyle, so thanks, Nick. Our presenters at the Sunday night meeting were Jane Kelly, who we brought into, again, giving a brief history of the Missoula Neighborhood Councils. Our general meetings almost always include a fair percentage of new folks, and even if they don't, get all feeling, is she hearing about the '72 Constitutional Convention and the last Local Government Study Commission, both of which contributed to our current connections to city council and city admin, Painter does. And Jane, to her credit, always ignores me when she's done, and I shake her and hug her and say, "Jane, you want to have a catch?" Tony Rollin, who's the recently elected chair of Missoula Neighborhood Watch, was in attendance, and had Painter sing the Missoula Neighborhood Watch anthem, which is a mashup of sinatras, "I Only Have Eyes For You" and Elvis's "Stop Lookin', Listen, Baby." Missoula PD's Ethan Smith and Rob Shabon from the Missoula County Sheriff's Office have been working with the Missoula Neighborhood Watch Board to help further develop that program. Greg Gullickson from your Public Works Sector Division Drainage reported on the current status of Missoula Water. He tried to pretend he was nervous and stuff, so as an accountant, he brought 16 pages of debits and credits, but it turns out people mostly wanted to know about their water meters and their water bills. Go figure. Anyway, Greg did a very nice job addressing questions folks had about ongoing work Missoula Water is doing. MCPS Superintendent Mark Fain, for the 17th time, gave Rose Park NC an update on the various and sundry work MCPS is doing to upgrade and update our school facilities. In particular, Mark talked about the work being done at Washington Middle School and Willard Alternative High School, both of which are in Rose Park. Mark and the principals of those schools have been very gracious in keeping our neighborhood apprised of the improvements being made at those schools. Mark also exhibited a great deal of common sense in refusing to join Painter in a duet of the Key Club song on his coat he wears, Little Button. I think it's the anthem. Might be, might be a fight song. I don't know. Jordan Lyons, who's the Grand Poobah, which may not be his official title, of the ASUM Render Center and their Neighborhood Ambassador Program, and Brenner Davis, who's a student manager of the ambassadors, discussed their availability to help mediate conflicts between neighbors and UM students. If we awarded MVP medals for Neighborhood Council meetings, they would probably, for our meeting, go to councilors Harp, Jones, and Ramos. Well, okay, if it was a popular vote, I would have gone to the ice cream truck, but the council would have definitely voted for those councilor-wors. They attended, one of the great benefits of our Neighborhood Councils, of course, is the opportunity they provide for additional dialogue with our community's representatives. It was very helpful to have Heather and Gwen and Jesse in attendance, and for you folks to make effort to explain your perspective on the city's work, and of course, to have you listen and respond to questions and concerns of Rose Park residents. Kudos and thanks to you for joining us. Jane also assisted us with adopting some changes to our bylaws and with conducting leadership team elections. I would be remiss in not listing those folks currently serving that capacity, Rule Agnew, Julie Detland, Tate Jones, Margaret Malino, Elizabeth Williams, and Claire Wood. I also need to thank the Missoula Senior Center for allowing us to hold our monthly leadership team meetings in their facility, to Parks and Rec for their assistance in scheduling use of Rose Park for our meeting, and the Big Dipper for making us some pretty good ice cream cones. I know you're probably all tired of hearing how much your neighbors appreciate what you do for us, but I would again offer up our thanks for that. You're on the front line of citizenship, and your work and passion is a very large part of what makes this town so great, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Painter. Appreciate that. Mr. Shon, unfortunately, we're out of time this evening, so... Love to hear what's happening on River Road.
Thank you. I'm Nick Shon, and I appreciate the opportunity to follow that wonderful display. We had our meeting on September 12th at the Garden City Harvest headquarters on River Road, which is a new facility, and it's been a great place. We've had our leadership meetings there and this general meeting, and so it's a great, it's a great addition to our neighborhood. We had presentations from Missoula Neighborhood Watch, from Missoula Water. We had a discussion about replacement zoning for Special District 2, about the ongoing Russell Street construction, and a presentation from Mud. We re-elected two existing members. Some of the highlights that people were really interested in are the Special District 2 zoning replacement. There's a corner of River Road and Russell, or Reserve right there, and that's going to change the number of potential units from 16 to 21. That was a concern for folks. In general, our meeting focused around traffic and transportation being a problem in our neighborhood, and this was sort of where it started. We talked a lot about the River Road traffic right now is a problem. Folks are speeding along that road to get from Russell Street to Reserve to avoid the traffic and whatnot. I think that's going to get a lot better when Russell Street is done and that left turn is no longer available, but for right now, it's a concern, and Jane helped us get a, one of those speed signs to tell people faster going, and hopefully that helps people remember that there are people that live on that road. Let's see what else. Those are the big things. We talked a little bit about the Reserve Street smell, which has popped up in the last couple of weeks again, but I know that that's sort of an ongoing thing that's being worked on, so we appreciate that. And that was it. That was our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Shon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, we have no additional neighborhood reports. We'll move on to communications from the mayor. I will be mercifully brief. I'm sorry that Mr. Cook is not here, because I appreciated his remarks. A couple of things of note is that we actually calculate on that median home price, that is, $280,000 is actually the median home price. But we have, in the past, and I will ask that we get it back up, we actually have a tool on the web that allows you to calculate property taxes based on, based on the value of your home, so we'll see if we can get that back up. That county website actually has all of the detail about where municipal funds are spent as well. You have to scroll on a little bit, and we also have extensive information on the website. But what I will do is a little coordination with our team and see if we can't make that more prominent. Through the budget process, we spend a lot of time talking about where the money goes and reporting on that, and we have a number of fairly easy-to-read charts that I think could be helpful. With that, we will move on to general comments from councilmembers. We'll begin this week with Ms. Merritt. And Ms. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Okay, well, I guess I'll take this opportunity. So I just wanted to take this opportunity today to thank a few people at the Parks and Recs Department. Summer has sadly come to a close, and we are now back to school, but I think that the work that they did with the students and the youth of Missoula needs to be called out, and so I would personally like to thank Gretchen Sutherland, Tyler Decker, and Meg, oh, I'm going to butcher this last name, Witcher. And they are the people who led up the Missoula Outdoor Recreation Education Program, or MORE, and the Kids in Action, the KIA Youth Services. They serviced over 2,000 kids this summer, participating in day camps. All of the day camps had waiting lists, and so there is many more children who could have been served by the work that they are doing. The Children in Action Program has doubled in registration since 2012, and the MORE Missoula Outdoor Recreation Education Program has doubled its registration since 2016. So I think it shows the great need for the work that they're doing, and I know personally from my family who participated, they had an amazing summer, and they were active, and they got to explore Missoula, and they learned how to skateboard and bike safety, and just all of the great things to make great little citizens here in Missoula. I also would like to point out that thus far in 2018, both Currents and Splash have had 146,380 total swim visits, and that's just as of this week, so the year Splash may be closed, but Currents is still open year-round, and one of the great services that I think that they provide that I think needs to be highlighted is that they offer swim lessons. And sadly, for children under the age of five, drowning is the number-one cause of accidental death. And so thus far this year, they have provided 1,571 swim lessons to youth in our city, and I just think that that is something that we cannot, you know, we have lots of rivers and lakes and irrigation ditches, but having these children have the skills to know how to be safe and properly swim is something that we can't take for granted. So I would like to thank Donna Gockler and all of the amazing staff at the Missoula Parks and Recreation Department. They do an outstanding job, and they should be commended for their work, so those are my comments. Thank you.
So I just wanted to give folks a heads-up that there are going to be repairs being done at the West Side Playground that starts the week of September 24th, and it'll be during school hour, so 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then I'll take this opportunity to pitch the North Side/West Side softball game, which is happening this Sunday at 4:00 PM, and we'll find out which neighborhood is the best neighborhood.
And that's how it's determined. Ms. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was only going to have one comment, but I'll add a quick one just about Splash, Montana. Again, I was never advocating for the close of Splash, Montana, or the city aquatics during the budget conversation when I wanted to remove $203,000 of general fund contributions to it. Actually, based on the numbers that Councilwoman Anderson provided, the 146,000 visits, if you take that and divide it into the 200,000 I suggested we cut, it would bump up people's fee by $1.30 per visit. So that's simply all I was suggesting, and if there are some folks that cannot afford that, I would gladly work with Councilwoman Anderson to start up a fund where people can voluntarily raise money for a scholarship program for underprivileged kids in a voluntary capacity, not forcing people through taxes. So just wanted to toss that out there, and kind of on a more solemn note, I know it's been a little over a week, or a little under a week, but I just want to remember the sacrifice of the victims of September 11th, and all of their family members, and the emergency response, police officers, firefighters, and I also want to remember the sacrifice response, police officers, firefighters, and I also want to remember the sacrifice of all the soldiers and their families who died in the war that followed, keeping us safe from terrorism. And I also wanted to give a big thanks to the city's police officers and firefighters, and we really appreciate what you do, and you make us the city that we are, so, thank you.
Mr. Rossberg?
Mr. Dabari?
Ms. Armstrong?
With that, we have no committee reports this evening, we have one item of new business regarding municipal court surcharges and a resolution pertaining thereto. Mr. Bickel is going to provide us some information this evening.
I have a staff report related to the Montana Supreme Court ruling that happened last week. There was a case that was ruled last week that, where the Supreme Court found that the city of Missoula's surcharge may not be imposed on violations of Montana state law. This is citing a lack of legislative authority to provide such a surcharge. This is a surcharge that's been around since two thousand and three, council first adopted it in two thousand and three at a level of five dollars, and it has been updated periodically by council over the past fifteen years. Before you, under new business, is a resolution as a reaction to that Supreme Court ruling, and the resolution considers two items. One is this need a suspension of the surcharge on Montana state law violations, now, obviously, the Supreme Court ruling did that, this clarifies that. It also clarifies that the surcharge is still applicable to those violations that are under city ordinance. And also, it's a direction to staff to implement a mechanism for refunding surcharges imposed and paid under state law violations. So what we're asking is, is staff will go back and look at the data we have available related to this, we'll work with the Montana Supreme Court and the Attorney General's Office to understand, you know, what their expectations are related to refunds, and we'll move forward with, through in committee work to update the council on what we're going to propose and establish a refund program. Let's talk about that a little bit. Some of the other things we have to do is, you know, there are thousands of surcharges that have been assessed and not paid, we need to work with our software vendor to be able to waive those surcharges, and we have to, we need to understand the staffing requirements operation for this refund program. Just in the last five years, we had sixty-one thousand transactions under the surcharge, it's a large volume of transactions, and we have data going back to two thousand and three that we'll need to be able to get to, so it's going to be, you know, depending on the scope and applicability of the refund program, it is, it will, you know, it'll, we'll have to look at our staffing requirements and our operational costs related to doing something like that. Finally, fiscal impacts. The surcharge accounts for approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars annually in total receipts that we have been collected through our system. As we go through this process to understand it, we may have to do a budget amendment in order to find appropriation authority for refunds and pay the cost of the administration of the program. So that, so now that the resolution is before your consideration to move in this direction, C.D. Attorney Jim Newgin is here to be able to answer questions, and also Municipal Court Judge Jenks is also here in the audience to be available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bickel, just one quick question, so that two-hundred-and-twenty-some-odd-thousand dollars, that's all in, that's all surcharges?
That is the, that is the, out of our, out of our software, the full court system, the amount of receipts on average for the last five years is about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars.
But that's, that's all surcharges?
All surcharges, yes, without a provision for the, without a provision for the amounts paid under city ordinance. We anticipate that about eighty percent of the surcharge are for state law violations and will no longer be able to be collected.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion, and then we can do questions and debate. Mr. Rossberg?
I'll move adoption of the resolution, and I have some questions, whenever it's appropriate to get into that.
Now is the time?
Okay. So I think, I just want to make sure I got the right deal. So the two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand is the average over the past five years? Okay. And we believe eighty percent of that are associated with the charges on state violation, okay, which are the ones at issue here. And as you pointed out, and I appreciate I was doing some digging into the history, because the article confused me, this didn't, this wasn't imposed out of the blue in two thousand and thirteen, which predates anyone on council, it was first done in two thousand and three, and then, so, the question here, the question I have, just to make sure, is, my understanding is this would be a refund program for all of those at the various levels going back to the two thousand and three?
I think that is yet to be determined, what level and what, you know, what the expectations of the Montana Supreme Court are, we need to be able to look at our data to understand what's at play, and, you know, our ability to be able to find that, you know, be able to query it and understand it, so it's, so it's, I think what we'd like to do is, essentially, this resolution would essentially direct staff to research this, the refund situation, bring it back to work through council committees, council can establish the policy procedures related to implement that.
So the short version is what this resolution does is turns it off?
Yeah.
Formally turns it off, and then there's a lot of unwinding to do here, it's a lot of data and a lot of labor, so what we'll do is come back to you with, with what we think is the best way to proceed in making sure that folks who are owed refunds get them. Further questions? Ms. Armstrong?
I know that the city carries liability insurance, is this something that we could file as a claim under MMIA, and, and then, so that's one part of the question, which I'm sure we'll look at, it's almost like it's having a judgment brought down, even though it's not a judgment against us, I don't know if it's something that we would be able to go to them and ask for reimbursement, and if we do this, are we setting precedents that would allow other courts to overturn other charges? I think the answer to both of those is no, but...
I'll let, I'll let, I'll let Jim answer a couple of those. Yeah, the last one is, you never know, right? And I also, so we know that Helena uses these surcharges as well, and we believe some other jurisdictions do as well, so we're not alone here in facing the consequences of this ruling with regard to MMIA, Jim?
I have a note that Billings has a much more elaborate and much more pricey municipal charges. They call them administrative fees, but they're putting them in the court on that. With respect to insurance, no, you have no liability insurance. Liability insurance is based on negligence, there's no negligence here, and there's also no coverage for things, there's an exclusion for things like refunds and paying back things, so we've already been notified by voicemail as well as email letter that there is no coverage.
Further questions? Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Bickel, if you could, I'm just going to repeat and make sure I understand this correctly for you, and I, so, from my understanding, is this first surcharge of five dollars was implemented in two thousand and three, and then it incrementally went up over the course of the next fifteen years, so the twenty-five dollars that is currently being charged is not twenty, it has not been charged over the entirety of the fifteen years?
That's correct.
Okay, so, those of you wanting to do quick math like I tried to do, would have been, it's not, we cannot just simply take eighty percent of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand times twenty-five times fifteen, that would not be correct number, which would be the easy thing to do, but, because it goes incrementally, so for the first however many years, it was only five dollars, and subsequently on from that, and so that is also the part of the, you know, figuring out who charged what amount over what year, if you had a fine in two thousand and four, and it was charged five dollars, finding you, getting you that back, and things like that, am I understanding that correctly? And do we, yes, and do we think that the eighty percent is pretty consistent throughout the course of each year?
It's hard to say, I would, I would suspect that, I mean, it's, you know, I think the type of infraction that the surcharges apply to, I'm told, are typically, are typically be state charges, so that's why that eighty percent number is there. And I, you know, I actually have the, I didn't get it into the PowerPoint, but I do have, you know, the charter was implemented in two thousand and three at five dollars, in two thousand and four it was ten, in two thousand and five it was fifteen, two thousand and six sixteen, two thousand and eleven eighteen, and then in two thousand and thirteen twenty-five. So that's the, that's the history of it.
Thank you so much.
Also important to remember that while the surcharge may, may be applied, it doesn't necessarily get paid. Ms. Armstrong?
I was just going to ask that when we, this all gets sorted out, and we either do or do not refund these things, is this something that we can do quarterly, or do we have to lump some at all at once, give it back, or is there, can we get creative, a way to do that?
Yeah, we're just not that far down the path, Councilwoman, it's, yeah, it's, there's a lot to unwind. Ms. Harp?
Judge Jenks, would you come forward, please?
You just wanted to say that.
I really did.
Judge Jenks, approach the bench.
And if it's permissible, I'd like to ask maybe a series of small questions.
You could even ask a series of big ones.
Okay, perfect. So, how long ago did you come and start serving on the bench?
Two thousand, December of two thousand and eleven.
Okay, and could you describe what the court system was like when you first came into, into the office?
It was fairly chaotic. I have some concerns about when we start looking at the records going back prior to that, it might be a challenge to figure out what was paid on the surcharge as opposed to what was paid on the fine, so I have some, some concerns, trepidation about going back there, but I don't think that we, you know, have a choice or should draw a line, we need to do that. I think that since I started, certainly, I think that we're going to be able to identify the exact amount. I won't say it'll be easy, because unfortunately, it arrived or is timed with our implementation as a pilot court of a new database, which is having, we're having a lot of challenges, especially on the financial side of that, because we are a pilot, which means we're kind of guinea pigs, and things need to get fixed, but I'm confident that for, at least from the two thousand, well, at least from the time that I was there, at least in two thousand and twelve on up, we're going to be able to identify the exact amounts. Prior to that, the policy was that, the other issue is that prior to that, the policy was that things went to collections after three months, and that's going to be a whole different struggle, because we're going to have to be looking at what interest accrued on those surcharges, so that might be a bit of a challenge, but it's something we're going to have to undertake. We are definitely going to need some assistance with staffing, we simply can't do this monolithic project with what we've got, because it is something that affects a lot of people, we want to make sure that those people who are entitled to the refunds are able to get them without a lot of roadblocks or anything like that, we need to get it moving, I want to get the checks distributed as soon as possible after we get the applications for the refund, so, but we're, we'll, we'll get her done, but we do need some help.
So, from, it sounds like from what you said, that you don't have the personnel in, on your staff to be able to tackle going back in accounting for all of these, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Each, each surcharge, we'll have to go in to the database, find the surcharge, find when it was imposed and under which incremental change, we have to then go to the payments, find out what payments were made on the case, the statutes require distributions, when somebody comes in and pays a partial payment, the statute requires to assign a certain amount to surcharges, certain amount to fines, certain amount to restitution, so if somebody had a fifty-dollar fine and a twenty-five-dollar surcharge, and they bring in twenty-five dollars, that isn't going to have been attributed to the surcharge. So, it's, you know, there is research that has to be done, and it will have to be done on each case as the applications come in. So we do want to make sure that we take the time to get something set up so that it will be as easy as possible for the public and something that we can manage.
Very good, and, and as I understand it, you have the discretion to impose that surcharge, or you can waive it, and off the back of your, off the back of your head, what would you estimate you do in terms of waiving that surcharge based upon the financial ability of the individual paying that?
Right, and, you know, I, it's difficult because there is me, and then there are also two assistant judges, and my, my style or my attitude has, you know, been evolving, and I expect that it will continue to be evolving. I do have discretion to waive that, I don't have complete hundred percent discretion, I mean, I have to follow the law. The twenty-five dollars that is, the Supreme Court said is not legal, does not go on the, for the ordinance violations. So for the really, really low-income people, you know, we're talking about the transient offenses or something, I haven't imposed, for myself, I haven't imposed surcharges on those for years, I'm not sure where I started, but I haven't done it for a long time, they don't have the money. And in the recent couple of years, I've been more and more just doing one surcharge per case as opposed to one surcharge per charge, and I do, that's, the surcharge is the first thing I waive when we're getting concerned about someone's ability to pay, because what I don't like about surcharges is that you can't do community service for the surcharge. And I, I like to make sure that there is an alternative to paying cash, and so that's, the surcharge is what goes down first as far as that sort of thing goes. Does that help?
It certainly does, and I think one final question, if you could provide perhaps what you believe to be the historical context of why the surcharge came into being in the very first place, and maybe you weren't the right person, but...
Yeah, I, you know, I can't answer to the two thousand and three through two thousand and twelve, or whatever it was. My recollection, and Jim can probably correct me, is that the last raise was, the impetus was to try and provide better prosecution for domestic violence, and it was trying to increase the city's staff, and I think, and Jim will happily jump in and correct me, I'm sure, but my recollection is that was what that was about, was that one. You know, we're not alone in this, this is a process that other jurisdictions have used as well, and so now everybody's kind of sitting there going, oh, well, now what? But I think, you know, and I think the theory behind using these is it's a user fee, I think the theory was that people who are, you know, the primary consumers of the court system should be footing some of the bill for the court system, I think that was the argument at the time that I recall, and prior to that last raise, I don't remember, I wouldn't know, actually, I wasn't here.
Thank you very much.
And I, Judge Jenks is exactly right, this is a, so, the court is not self-contained, it does not support itself through revenue, it's a general fund department, and the, those user charges were an attempt to relieve the general fund and the property taxpayer of some of the burden of operating that court system and transfer those costs to the folks who were using it, and they were largely... who were using it. And they were largely using it because they had found themselves afoul of the law in some case. So that was the impetus. Further questions? Ms. Ramos?
Thank you. Just a quick point of clarification. I think, it's not for you, Judge Jenks. I think maybe Mr. Bickel. Thank you. So, so I guess my question is, so are these volunteers, so like if somebody comes forward, is that the only time that we'll have to reimburse them? Or is it our job or we tasked with like tracking down everybody that's paid the surcharge and reimbursing them?
We're not exactly sure yet exactly what the expectations are. I think the, you know, the discussions we've had, we've kind of, Judge Jenks talked about an application process to be able to do that. But I think we need to be able to kind of get our arms around the scope of what, exactly what we intend to do here.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right, discussion on the motion. Ms. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we get to the point where we need to make some cuts, I have some ideas for everybody if they are interested. So I'm happy to provide those for some folks. And again, this kind of comes back to just my philosophy of big government, small government. I've been kind of rallying against surcharges and fines for a while. To me punishable by fine means legal for rich people. And I don't say that lightly. I mean that there's a lot of folks in this community that are very underprivileged, not by any choice of their own either. There's single mothers that have had to leave in abusive relationships that are stuck with three kids because her dirtbag husband ran out on her and they don't have enough means to pay some of these fines. So, and the surcharges, obviously, I know the fines are a little bit different. But when you look at somebody that has to pay $25 and you look at a single mother who maybe makes $8 or $9 an hour, and that's obviously three or four hours of her life compared to somebody that's making $150,000 a year, that is 10, 15 minutes of their life. So I think that everybody deserves equal treatment under the law. And again, I know that these are not intended to raise revenue, but indeed, they were raising revenue that were helping to offset general fund expenses. I know it seems a little ironic that I was rallying against the same idea when it came to Splash Montana and the Aquatic Center. But again, that comes back to people's general philosophy of the roles of government. Again, I don't think the government should be in the business of entertainment. I think they should be to provide criminal justice, police, fire, infrastructure, various things like that. And unfortunately, surcharges and fines can really be a revolving door for a lot of these low-income folks. You look at, maybe they can't afford the surcharge. I know that people don't necessarily get tossed in jail over that specifically. But once you're in the criminal justice system, it's very, very hard to get out. And again, this is in no way disparagement on Judge Jenks or her work. But it's something that I hope that we can look at as a council. I'm actually working with President Van Losberg right now, crafting a referral about how we can talk about alleviating some of these extra taxes on our poorest individuals in the form of fines and surcharges. And obviously, the $25 is still going to remain intact on city ordinances. So that still presents a problem for us. And I'd like to see if we could possibly discuss lowering some of those or, and/or increasing the amount of money that we credit towards the community service instead of like $15 an hour. Maybe we look at $30 or $40 or $50 an hour, because there's a lot of lost opportunity costs when folks are doing this. And if it's enough for them to just get the message that, hey, I need to get my brake light fixed, or something like that, I think that we could do that by allowing them to work for an hour or two without having them make, take more time out of their day than they could be used to find another job or spend time with their kids, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm obviously supportive of the motion and I just hope for some further discussion. And just wanted to point out that I went back to 2013, just the fee increase, not the creation of the surcharge itself. But I saw that Adam Hertz, John Wilkins, and Dick Haynes voted against it. Obviously, I can't get Dick's point of view on it because he passed away, unfortunately. But I spoke to Adam Hertz and former Councilman Wilkins about it. And they were the same, same reason that I'm opposed to these. They saw it as unfair to poorer members of the community. And they both are going to be coming down to make a statement, they said, just about why they voted no. So I was pleased to see that a couple of people that I consider mentors of mine oppose that. So thank you all, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Further discussion? Ms. Van Losberg?
Thanks. I wanted to say thanks to Mr. Nugent and Dale for getting the resolution done so promptly. It's the right thing to do. I'm obviously supportive of it. I went back and watched some of the Budget Committee video from when the, in 2013. And that was when it was raised $7 from $18 to $25. And I don't remember any of those people just mentioned at the Budget Committee commenting on it. They must have done so at a later budget meeting. But I did want to recognize former Councilman Jason Weiner and Cynthia Wilkin. They both had a sense then around some concerns of this nature, sort of the cycle of poverty concerns. And it was tough to, as has been previously discussed, there was a desire to increase capacity in the attorney's office. Mr. Nugent spoke to that in the Budget Committee. And, and do so in a way that minimized tax burden. But at that time, there was, there was a sense of concern around the level, around the fees and what that might be causing folks. And I think Cynthia and Jason had a good sense for it then. So look forward to the discussion.
Further discussion? Anyone in the audience care to comment on the resolution? Ms. Ramos?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to state for the record that Jason Weiner and Cynthia Wilkin both voted to increase these fines.
Further discussion? None. Okay. Anyone in the audience? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on the resolution.
On the resolution, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. DeBary? DeBary votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Van Losberg? Van Losberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is eight ayes and four absents.
We have, the resolution is approved. We have no additional new business. Do we have any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? Ms. Armstrong?
Happy birthday to Ms. Heather Harp.
That's not even miscellaneous. With that, ladies and gentlemen, as always, I thank you for your service and we will be adjourned.